Could everyone please take your seats? We're gonna get started now. Guys?
Hello, hello?
Guys, could everyone please take your seats?
Can everybody take their seats, please?
What's that? Okay, okay. Could everyone please take their seats?
Dean, get the hammer.
There we go.
Where's the gavel when you need it?
Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the 2024 Leadership Hermosa Beach City Council Candidate Forum. My name's Paul Reiner, and I'm a board member of Leadership Hermosa, and I'm a proud member of our class of 2022 and a 16-year resident of Hermosa Beach. Let's start tonight by paying a moment of silence for the victims of Storm Milton. So if everyone could just take 15 seconds to think a little bit about what's happened Thank you for that. The mission of Leadership Hermosa is to educate, train, and connect leaders for the betterment of our community. That's why we're here tonight. Before we get started, we'd like to express our appreciation for the candidates who have come tonight and to share their thoughts with us, and for the board members, alumni, and current Leadership Hermosa Beach class as well. In fact, would all of the Leadership Hermosa Beach class members, board members, and alumni, including those on the dais, please stand? Thank you all for your service. Now on to the main event. This is the third of three forums this election season, and many of you are already familiar with our candidates. Our forum will utilize the following format. Each of the five candidates will be allowed a two-minute introductory statement. Following the intros, we'll have 10 to 12 questions, developed by members of Leadership Hermosa Beach based on the current topics, as well as a question submitted by the community on our website prior to the meeting. We will not be taking additional questions from the audience. None of the candidates have seen any of these questions, and each candidate will have a minute and a half to respond to each question. We'll rotate down the line in which candidates answer each question first. We'll close with each candidate giving a minute and a half address as well, with any final thoughts they have. Our goal is to end at 8:30, so about two hours here. Finally, this is not just a Q&amp;A session. We hope and expect that the candidates not only will express their opinion, but try to highlight where they're different from the other candidates, because that will really help our constituency figure out who they want to vote for. I'll cut off any candidate who's not acting in a civil or professional manner, and I will cut off you at your time allotment. My colleagues in front have signs that will indicate when there's 30 seconds left and when there's 10 seconds left. I've instructed the operators to cut off your mics when the time has run up. Also, I might slightly alter the question depending how we're getting answers along the line. Lastly, I might follow up with a candidate if we believe that you've sidestepped answering the question, because we're really trying to get answers to the questions. Now for some legal disclosures. Leadership Hermosa is an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit. It does not support or oppose any candidate for political office. Tonight's questions do not reflect the political views of Leadership Hermosa Beach; in fact, we don't have any, or of any of its directors, officers, or members. The orders of the candidates on the dais were selected at random, and now we are ready for the candidates' opening statements. I'm gonna start with Elka, and you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you so much, Paul. Thank you all for coming and for showing up to this. I know many of you and have met a lot of new people as I've gone door-to-door in our community. For those of you who don't know me, I grew up in Hermosa Beach. I attended local schools. My mom still lives here. I raised my daughter here. And after a long and fulfilling career as a reporter and television news producer, I have decided to give back to the community that gave me so much. Just like many of you, I did junior lifeguards, I played volleyball at the beach, I surfed, I was one of the first students to go to Loretto on the Sister City program, and I'm still active in these programs. The reason I'm running is because I care deeply about this community, and I have talked to people and I've seen things that I think we could really improve upon. I'd like to make sure we have safe streets. Lot of comments about e-bikes and the homeless, which I've addressed in previous debates and will do so here. I'm also very concerned about spending at City Hall on how much we spend on consultants and studies, and I know that some are necessary, but some probably can be done in-house. My background is communication, so I want to make sure we have better communication between the residents and the city. I want all your questions answered, and my skill set is getting answers and figuring out how to get to where we need to go and to get results for you as residents. My motto is, "We deserve a well-run city that puts residents and businesses first." Thank you.
Thank you, Elka. Brian?
Hello, everyone, and hello, everyone, and thank you for coming, and thank you for having us. We have two minutes, so we're supposed to be quick. My name is Brian Sheel. Please vote for me. Good night. Listen, I'm not gonna go over my resume up here. My whole entire life story is up on my website. I probably overshared up there. If you look at my platform, it all boils down to three same goals: faster, simpler, and more cost-effective. And yes, simpler is a word. I looked it up. To my colleagues on the dais, thank you for being here. To the city and the city employees, please don't take my comments as, you know, hypercritical. I'm a concerned citizen, just like you are. I'm just trying to come up with common sense ideas to help our city. So having said that, are you ready? I said, are you ready? Our city spends too much time congratulating themselves on a job that's been poorly done. Our city spends... Tuesday night, our council voted to proceed with the Parking Lot D project, which really is a failure. I don't know if anyone watched that meeting, but it's a $1.8 million project, and we're gonna get three more parking spaces out of it. Our city spends too much time signing proclamations and pledges that really don't accomplish anything. The ceremony at the Clark Building, you know, was celebrating a project that's been on the books for seven years. The original budget was $137,000. Today's budget was $3.6 million. Our local government is the fastest-growing and largest employer in all of Hermosa Beach. 60% of our general funds go to salaries of our staff. Ladies and gentlemen, this is unsustainable. There are four tax increases on the ballot.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Michael, you're next.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul, for hosting this forum. Thank you to Leadership Hermosa. My name is Mike DeToye. I am currently on city council. I've served the last five years. Just to rewind, I will give a little bit of background for those of you who don't know me. I first learned my great-grandfather was the president of the LA County Chamber of Commerce, was very involved in some instrumental development in LA, and that has inspired me to skip back to my community that I love. So it's why I became a firefighter. It's why I became a city commissioner. It's why I initially ran for city council and was elected five years ago, and it's why I'm seeking reelection again. I moved to Hermosa Beach 15 years ago, and I fell in love with its beach culture, it's, you know, the history of punk rock. There's so much to love here, which is why we all are here, and we're all passionate about the community. And eight years ago, when I married my wife, we knew this is where we wanted to raise our family. So now I have two kids. Both of them are in Hermosa Beach, at Hermosa View, and I spend so much more time walking around town, riding my bike around town. I see, notice the conditions of the streets and the sidewalks. I'm over at the library, which needs a lot of love, and just seeing how that critical infrastructure affects our lives. It also affects public safety. So I know how much our young families rely on our infrastructure, how much our seniors rely on our infrastructure, and it's why I've been passionate about our capital improvement projects moving forward. On a professional front, as I mentioned, I'm a fire captain for the City of Riverside Fire Department. I do have a long commute home, but every time I crest Gould and come into Hermosa Beach, I'm reminded why we live here, why we decided to raise our family here. I went, in my last five years, every single goal of mine on city council has been focused on public safety and making sure our community is safe. I also have a bachelor's degree in finance, went to Santa Clara University, have a master's degree in public administration. I'm also a fiduciary trustee on a medical retirement trust with over $350 million in assets. So I've shared with you what motivates me to run. I'm excited to talk more about our platform and how we can continue to make Hermosa Beach better. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. On to Michael.
Good evening. I'm Michael Keegan. I was kind of a reluctant candidate. I didn't really think I was gonna run for this job, and just the way things have been moving over the last, I don't know, 18 months in the city, I came closer and closer to deciding to run. So I'm running kind of to do a course correction within the city. I think we need to alter the way we're managing the city, the way we're spending money. I mean, recently, we were starting, we broke ground on a path that's gonna cost $1 million for handicap residents and guests. And I'm not sure that's the best use of our funds from our general fund. That was a project that was supposed to cost $200,000, and it's now over $1 million. And I just don't think that we were supposed to get grants. There was gonna be no general fund monies. And then when it finally came to fruition after two or two and a half years, they just decided to spend $1 million. There's alleys and streets that are, have crumbled pavement that aren't being taken care of, and now we're gonna have a potential bikeway for e-bikes that we'll have to spend police resources and time. It's so ill-thought-out. I mean, go up to Seaview Park, up on the other side of town. We put in a park, and we put solar panels to light one light bulb. We put five solar panels on a separate structure, not attached to the bathroom. We spent about $700,000 building a toilet. We just need to get a hold of how we're spending. We need to do a more serious review. The solar panels that they put up there are on a curved roof. When you go there, you are just amazed that we would put a curved metal roof and then try and attach solar panels to it. So they put flexible ones in, which don't work very well, and they don't last very long. So I'm running because I want to make some changes in the way we manage our city, and I look forward to telling you more about it tonight.
Thank you, Michael. And Yanni?
Good evening, Hermosa. Good evening, Leadership Hermosa Beach. I'm so stoked to be here. My name is Yanni Lang, 47 years old, born and raised in Hermosa Beach. I went to St. Cross, I went to North School, I went to Hermosa Valley, then to Redondo, Ohio, El Camino, and Long Beach State University, where I studied public relations and got a minor in marketing under the School of Journalism. But I tell everybody I got my real degree from the University of Hermosa Beach. My parents live in town. My wife's a kindergartner, pardon me, kindergarten teacher here at View. She's been here for 15 years, taking care of everybody's kids. My brother still lives in town, and little-known fact, my dad is one of the best ping-pong players at the Five-O Club. I have proudly served as a commissioner for 10 years. I have also served as a board director for the Chamber of Commerce. I sit on the South Bay Board Writers Club Board of Directors, and I've had the opportunity to bring a lot of events to town and organize that not only raise our economy, but celebrate our beach culture. Dude, I'm one of the guys that brought back concerts on the beach, not once, but twice. And also, I spearheaded the introduction of pickleball courts to Hermosa. I have a tangible background on bringing things to the community that they want. I've got an amazing amount of endorsers. Stacy Aramato, Mary Campbell, Jeff DuClos, Carol Resnitchek. I also have the amazing support of the local business economy. Spider Surf, ET Surf, Granny's Market, Stoke Chocolates, Curious, and I'm also endorsed by Mark Mamber of Hermosa Beach Little League. Surf industry legend, Bob Hurley, TV personality, Rick Dickert, Fletcher Draghi, co-founder of the world-famous punk band Pennywise. Also, class of 2011 Leadership Hermosa. I sat on the board for two years, regular speaker at Hermosa Cafe, co-founder of the Beach Ball, and 2012 Emerging Leader Award recipient, which I'm very proud of.
Thank you, Yanni. So now that you've gotten a chance to meet the candidates and hear from them, we're gonna move on to some questions. The first couple of questions are specifically around some of the ballot initiatives that might impact city council. The first one, although you've addressed it on a couple of the other forums, I have a small twist to it. Are you in favor of the 3/4% city sales tax, Measure HB? And regardless whether you're in favor or not, if it's passed, where would you prioritize the incremental general funds be directed? We're gonna start with Brian.
Thank you, Paul. I am opposed to the 3/4% sales tax. I think that this was on the ballot two years ago, and the citizens of Hermosa Beach voted it down. I also take issue with the, I've heard different tabulots of how much we've spent on promoting this sales tax. But this was a gorgeous three-color brochure that showed up in my mail three times to tell me to vote for this sales tax. And I really take issue with the city spending, I've heard $30,000, I've heard $60,000 of our tax money to get more of our tax money. I just don't agree with it. And in the brochure, it compares the tax rates to all the surrounding communities. And I, you're making my point. If El Segundo and Manhattan Beach and Palos Verdes has a higher tax rate than we do, people are gonna come here, even if they can save money on dinner or a party or whatever they're doing. In the brochure, they do not tell you that every vehicle you buy, your next car, motorcycle, trailer, everything that comes to your house, anything you order online, will be affected by this sales tax. It will make your life more expensive. As far as where the money's gonna go, if it passes, I will work with the Citizen Oversight Committee to funnel the money, not to more city employee salaries.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. You can be the one that everyone can tar and feather me, because I am supportive of the sales tax. It's kind of political suicide up here, running for reelection and supporting it, but I'll tell you why. It's been five years of it. So current sales tax in LA County for cities is 9.5%. Hermosa Beach receives 1% of that. The rest goes to the county or the state. So 6% goes to the state, 2.5% goes to the county. Approximately, you know, around half will be get paid by visitors, which is a good thing for us. And I will mention Manhattan Beach is proposing a 50-cent sales tax this November, and it's because infrastructure is very expensive. We defeated oil drilling in town by 80% in 2015. Since then, we've paid over $8 million in the oil settlement bond, and we have another 10 years of paying this. So that means we've had $8 million that we haven't invested in our streets, we haven't invested in our parks. One of the first few meetings I sat in this chamber, it was twice as many crowd, or twice as many people in the crowd, and it was to save the police. When I was elected in 2019, we had about 23 or 24 officers out of 38. Our police department was on the verge of failure, and we gave a fair contract. It was nothing extraordinary. We have a new chief, and now we are one of the only agencies that is fully staffed in the South Bay. So with this, I look to continue in funding our capital improvement needs that we have, inherited from past councils, and keep supporting our public safety moving forward. Thank you.
I'm not supporting the sales tax increase. I don't, I think that the tax is, a tax that we don't need at this time. I think that it'll make businesses harder for businesses to do business in Hermosa Beach, more expensive. I just think, this same tax was on the ballot two years ago, and the city, it failed two years ago, the same exact tax. And so afterwards, the city didn't hold one meeting, not even one discussion, as to why it didn't pass. They didn't self-reflect, they didn't say, hey, we'll tighten our belt and see what we can do, and maybe in a couple of years, we'll try again. They didn't say, let's, you know, cut our budget, let's save some money. Instead, we've been hiring people at a rate, we've hired the budget, the amount of personnel has gone up at least in the last five years by about 25 positions. So we keep adding people. We just added two people to the staff to do special event permit processing and to do film permits. We bring in less than $100,000 in fees for those two avenues, and we'll be spent, we're deficit spending just in that one department. So no, I'm not for the tax. And as far as where I'd spend it, I would probably spend it on capital improvement projects that have been deferred, like the City Yard. There's too numerous to list tonight. Thank you.
Yanni?
Thank you very much. I am not in favor of the sales tax. Americans... Americans are dying the death of 1,000 paper cuts. I have a family of five. Groceries cost an arm and a leg, gas isn't getting any better, and living in Hermosa is very, very expensive. There's talk that the tax will be supplemented by tourists. If you look at the statistics, our peak tourist months only account for two of the, two months out of the calendar year. So guess what? Our residents live here 12 months out of the year. We are the ones who go buy our back-to-school clothes at our shops, buy our surfboards, skateboards, and e-bikes from our local stores. We are the ones that buy our birthday cards and holiday presents from our local small gift stores. It is the residents of Hermosa Beach that'll bear the burden. Now ultimately, we know that this is at the will of the voters. Provided this passes, I will respectfully and humbly and eagerly work with the Citizens Oversight Committee to make sure that money is spent appropriately, also with emphasis on unfinished products and projects, particularly public safety, making sure that we put technology into public safety to keep our streets safe and complete projects, like the downtown lighting project that's been discussed way too long. That's what I would do. Thank you very much.
And Elka?
I actually wrote the ballot rebuttal against this tax increase, and I don't think it's good for businesses or our residents. The city says that this $3 million is needed to fund the police, but the police department is fully staffed, it has a $1 million real-time crime center, and a $1 million mobile unit to help the homeless. And there is no guarantee that the city wouldn't use this extra $3 million for staff or bonuses. Everyone knows the voters rejected this two years ago, and there has been no budget cuts since then. I asked the city manager what has been done to see, you know, if there's any fiscal restraint. She said they have consolidated positions. That is not enough. If it does pass, I would say we need to use it for our roads. We used, we used to spend about $33 per person on roads. Last year, we spent zero. That is unacceptable.
Thank you, Elka. I'm going to move on to the second question. If Proposition 33 passes, the proposition enabling local cities to impose rent control laws, what if any rent control laws would you be in favor of the city adopting? In this one, we're going to start with Michael Detoy.
Thank you. Just clarification, the HB cares and the real-time crime center are both $1 million grants that are received from the federal government. Roads, the going rate is about $2 million for a mile of road. But anyways, Prop 33, I am not in support of it, even though I am, I think, the only renter up on the dais. And I've been proud to represent the community that is half of our community. I do have a unique perspective where, as a renter, it's definitely tough. I'm very, I'm in a great fortunate situation, as a longtime renter, been in the same house for 15 years. But with that, we are also perplexed with the, you know, the paradigm of building more houses. And so there's a lot of studies out there that show with rent control, it's great for the people that are in the homes currently, but there's also a disincentive for developers to build new homes and put new housing units on the market. And that's what we're facing right now. We have the arena numbers from HCD. We have rezoned a lot of properties for the opportunity to build new homes. But with that, there could be a disincentive across the board through studies that we would not be getting new housing units on the market. And that's what we need. We have a housing shortfall in the state, we, of all spectrums, market rate to low affordability markets. And so we need to build more housing as a whole. But that being said, we're 1.4 square miles, and we also can't burden the whole load for all of LA Metro. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Michael. Michael?
I'm against the Proposition 33. I'm a homeowner and I'm also a landlord. And rent control has really never been a success in any city that I know of. It tends to stifle redevelopment, fixing up a property. You can end up with, you know, people not paying as much attention to their properties by not getting market rates. And so there's a disincentive to keep your houses up, your landscaping up. Many other things will occur if people start, you know, implementing rent control. So I will fight that vigorously if that wins.
And Yanni?
Thank you. I too am opposed to rent control. As a renter for a long time, I remember my studio apartment on 16th Street was $650, utilities included. It was a, oh my gosh, it was a dream. Now I went back, probably about 15 years later, it's about $2,200. It's amazing. It's, it's not amazing, it's scary, it's not easy. But I do oppose rent control. Economists agree that it distorts the market. Let the free market dictate rent. I feel you renters, I've been there, I understand. But what we, what we do need to do is build more housing, and we'll discuss that later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Elka?
I am opposed to rent control. I think we should leave it up to the landlords what they want to charge for rent. And I've lived in some real dumps before, and it was an incentive to work harder and to get a better place for myself and my daughter. Thank you.
And lastly, Brian?
It's a very tough question for me. I was the benefactor of, I received the benefits from rent control when I was a very young man. And it helped me get on my feet, and it helped me build my business. Now I am a homeowner. I bought my home in Hermosa Beach 25 years ago, and it was all the money in the universe to me then. And it's almost 100 years old, so talk about living in a dump, you should come see my place. But I'm also paying off a rental property now, so I am now a landlord. So I'm on both sides of this issue. I'm landing on not in favor of rent control. I do believe the marketplace will dictate how and where we can afford to live. I do believe that the low-income housing rezoning that we've done in Hermosa Beach is excellent if we can get over a few hurdles that are in the zoning code with the land value recapture fee that developers will have to pay, but I'm hoping we're going to get into that later. I don't know. So I'm landing against rent control.
All right, we got a little unanimity there. All right, shifting topics a little bit, we're going to try to get your point of view of some potential city upcoming agenda items. Firstly, what's your position on significant capital investment projects being considered? Specifically, are you in favor of building a new city hall or renovating the current one? Similarly, do you support a proposed $100 million civic center? We'll start this one with Michael Keegan.
I'm very much opposed to building a new city hall. This is a 1950s building, and it's a great asset for the city. I know that there's, I guess there's not enough offices for the amount of employees we've brought on. We've got to kind of rethink that. Why do we have so many new employees that don't fit in a building that we were able to run the city for, for almost 120 years? I think we need to look and figure out why we need more space. Secondly, this building was renovated in about 2006. I was served on the council then, and I approved renovating this room, which used to have linoleum floors and brick walls. And we made a nice improvement in here, and it's almost, it's a little over 20 years old, and it looks great. Looks like the day that we opened it up. So I think renovation is an excellent idea. Over here in the atrium, they said the rain falls and it all goes down into the basement. Well, let's put a cover over that. Let's put windows up there, an atrium, to create and stop the rain from coming in. So I'm against the new city hall. I'm more interested in renovating this building.
And civic center?
The civic center, this is the civic center. You mean, the building across the street?
Yeah. Anyway, I think we're just about out of time, aren't we?
Thank you.
Yanni?
Thank you. I'm going to refer to the Fullerton Consulting report that we all looked at. So this project, I think, is getting lost in semantics, and the choice of words is a little bit confusing. So this project is proposed for multi-problems throughout the city. Police headquarters, there was the discussion, the City Yard, I know that's been advanced to do, to be updated in a separate capacity. The EOC, Base 3 down the street, and City Hall is one of the other components. The way I understand it, we have the ability to à la carte and prioritize which facility gets updated if we choose to move forward. First, we need to listen to the community. A Citizens Oversight Committee is going to be established, and nothing is happening overnight. There's going to be almost 12 months of community outreach, much like what we did in Measure S. We formed working groups, talking groups, community outreach groups, and identified what needed to be fixed. So as far as I'm concerned, like Mr. Keegan said, City Hall is fine. Talking to the police department, when I did a ride-along with them, they had no problem with their facility. They want better equipment, better technology to keep our streets safe. City Yard is probably the only one that is glaringly needing some assistance. So once again, let's hear what the Citizens Oversight Committee brings back to us and move forward with the projected, or the proposed timeline. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Elka?
I am opposed to a new civic center. I think we should renovate our existing buildings. And there are about 34 capital improvement projects on the books that have not been finished. So before taking on a huge project like this, I think we should get those done on time and on budget. And that includes the Clark Building, the bathrooms weren't done on time or on budget, and there are many other, the City Yard. I'm also opposed to the dozens of consultants they've brought in to give us plans and alternate plans, and a community engagement consultant that will poll each of you to see if you actually want this project to go through. Now, I don't know about you, but I've spent maybe 10 minutes at the most at City Hall. And usually, I go there to pay for something, a parking permit, and most of the time, they tell me all the information that I want or need is online. So as we're going online and AI is becoming a part of local government, I don't see the need to have this huge footprint in our city.
Thank you. Brian?
I don't know how many consultants were hired. I'm only aware of the Fullerton Consulting presentation that was presented to both the Planning Commission and the city council. I obtained the PowerPoint presentation, and I watched all of the Fullerton Consulting presentations that they made to the city. As Yanni said, it can be an à la carte item, but as the meetings were going on and the city council was questioning the consultants, it seemed to me that everyone was funneling down, they had option A, B, C, and D. And if you read it, actually, if you go online and you can get the PowerPoint presentation, or I can send it to you if you email me at brian@bryanshield.com. I visited every single picture and every site that they mentioned in that proposal. I did a ride-along with the police, not voluntarily, but still. So listen, I went to all of these sites, and there's definitely some work that needs to be done. This building is fine. Like Elka said, we have 44 capital improvement projects that are, that are approved and not, nothing's being done on them. The City Yard definitely needs to be done. If you look at the proposal from Fullerton Consulting, look at the last half of Option D and the last half of Option C, which will get us parking and will get us over there with the storage units over there.
And lastly, Mike?
Thank you. What the council approved is moving this conversation forward and having a holistic view of what properties we have, what opportunities there are, if there's any opportunity for private investment, because even the renovation here is going to be tens of millions of dollars, which our general fund cannot support. So having that conversation of what it looks like. We rent, we own the storage unit just south of us, and we get rent every year from that property. So if we were to build on that property, now we're not getting revenue from that property. So we need to have that conversation when you get the stakeholder input into this project. We need to see where good parking is for upper-tier businesses to support our businesses. But as you can hear with our servers in the back, this is not an ideal situation with the infrastructure we have. Talking to the police officers, I have a different opinion from what they say. Their locker room is out of room, they do get rain, or when it rains, it does flood through the ceiling there. So our civic center needs love. The council did push forward the civic, or the City Yard. Those buildings are definitely past their lifetime, but the other building that I'm really concerned about is the library. It was built in 1962. The last renovation there was over 25 years ago. If you walk there, we need to have that holistic view of our city infrastructure and the best way to move forward with it at the least cost to our general fund. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. The next question. How do you suggest we address the growing challenge with electric bikes, particularly on the Strand? Should there be additional enforcement or new laws? Yanni, why don't we start with you?
Thank you very much. My son has an e-bike, and I feel that we've already solved this problem decades ago. So when I was a kid in the 80s and 90s, the mode of transportation by juveniles was skateboards. So through re-establishing a skate park, re-envisioning certain architectural designs, we prevented skateboarding from being a nuisance. Fast forward now, the preferred choice of transportation is e-bikes. And I agree, we do need to make sure that everybody, whether they're juveniles or adults, have the opportunity to learn how to use them appropriately. What I envision in my mind's eye is utilizing the Big Lots parking lot as an area that we hold monthly educational, not exercises, pardon me, we team up with local e-bike stores, dealers, whether it's Spider, ET, or the Strand. All those, all those folks are so enthusiastic about helping promote e-bike education. Furthermore, I think that we have an aggressive ticketing campaign at the beginning of summer to teach, you know, folks who are speeding, stunting, riding without a helmet, maybe riding in tandem, a firm lesson. When I got my texting ticket, I never texted again in the car. So sometimes that is effective. But I would like to conclude, one of the best ways to enforce responsible e-bike riding is through positive reinforcement. So when an officer sees somebody driving, pull him over, give him a reward to creamy boys. Thank you.
Elka?
I think this would have been a perfect opportunity to have a town hall meeting on this topic. I've talked to dozens of people from young to old that say that the e-bike problem is out of control. They don't know what the rules are, they don't know if there's enforcement going on. And it would have been a great opportunity for the city to put out something like they did on the sales tax increase. They could have done a e-bike rules and regulations, educational material and handouts for everyone here, because safety is a top concern. And what I hear from people all the time is they say, something's going to happen, somebody's going to get killed. And there is such concern that we really need to address this more aggressively and do enforcement and inform parents, kids, get the police involved, and the city.
Thank you. Brian?
I wanted to get an e-bike. My wife said I need to pedal, so I did not get an e-bike.
You still can pedal?
I still, well, but she said no. I was fully human powered, that's what she said. I can't do it, that's it. I think that the community has a problem with the marauding groups of kids that were very prevalent a year ago and two years ago. It was a huge problem, especially down on Pier Plaza. The kids will get together and they get in this mob mentality, and they were cruising around down there really fast and hurting people. That is not an e-bike problem, that is a parenting problem, because these kids are out there and they're in a gang mentality, and they're, they're hurting people. The police did aggressively crack down on that. Parents, let me give you a tip, your kids are showing you videos on TikTok of them driving up to police officers and say, hey, look at my e-bike, can I still ride on this? These TikTok videos are two and three years old before the police caught up with the rules. The Siron e-bikes are the ones that look like motorcycles, those are vehicles. They need to be registered. I mean, if your, if your bike goes 80 miles an hour, you know, you can't buy it and, you know, call it, if a Tesla is a car, then these things are motorcycles. That's what I say. The Talaria also, same thing. If it pedals, if you can't put pedals on it, it's illegal. I did run into the Maricosta chapter of the Hells Angels out there. And it's the parents.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. Yes, this is definitely an issue that has come, definitely showed itself after coming out of COVID, and we have been acting on city council. The police department is taking this seriously, the school district is taking it seriously, and we continue to make it, continue to make it. and we continue to make it, continue to make this a big issue. Just in June, we passed an urgency ordinance which bans electric e-bikes on the Strand, on the Green Belt, and then any showboat riding, popping wheelies. And the issue becomes, it's an education issue, which we've done with our schools. We partner with our schools to park an e-bike on the school campus now. Every kid needs to go through an e-bike safety class. They're actually, I'm noticing a lot more helmets are on their head, not on their handlebars, they're actually strapped, which is a good thing, because when they do fall, it's, you know, there's no, there's no, accidents on e-bikes and motorcycles are very serious. I see them in my daily job. And then there's enforcement issue. And our police chief, they do saturation checkpoints. They can go out in a couple-hour period and write 60 tickets. The moment they're gone, everyone's back on the road, breaking the rules. And then the last thing is going to be an advocacy thing, and that's partnering with our state and local, or state representatives to get some sort of state licensing or registration for these bikes. Those Siron bikes, we authorize our police to impound. As I said, we're taking this issue very seriously. I do not want someone to pass away in our town from an e-bike incident. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And Michael?
Yes, I have a 14-year-old who's riding around on his e-bike, and one thing that I think the city should look into is to banning tandems on the bikes and letting kids ride two on a bike. I think that's a recipe for a disaster to happen, worse than even by yourself, because the bike is not as stable. So that's something that we can do now. And the other item is that the more expensive ticketing is working, because kids are wearing their helmets more, because parents like me say, you know, where are you going to come up with the money for that ticket? And so my son's a little better at wearing his helmet. I don't think that we're going to solve this overnight. I told my son that if he and his friends don't start obeying the law, the state's going to take the right to ride the bike away. They're going to say you're going to have to be 16, you're going to say you're going to have to get a driver's license to drive one. So it's going to come sooner or later if this keeps up. So hopefully, the message will get through to the students in town, and the parents can lead the way by coaching them and explaining that this is going to be a privilege you will no longer have. The state is moving in that direction, I can tell you. You can just read the paper to realize it. So I'd say we need to keep stepping up education and enforcement. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let's take a pause. Anyone in the back, if you want to come up and sit in the front, you're more than welcome. If you want to keep standing, that's fine, but we can take a pause to allow you to kind of take your seats. Okay, you can leave.
We didn't say you could leave. What?
Was it something you said?
Come on now. No more jokes, no more jokes.
Okay. Moving on to the next question. In June, the Grants passed Supreme Court ruling empowered cities to ban homeless. Should the Council direct the city to remove homeless from the Beach Green Belt and/or other locations in Hermosa? More so than they've kind of been urging today to the homeless, less so, they're using just the right amount? What's your position on how we should be addressing the homeless in Hermosa Beach? This one, we're going to start with Elka.
I've talked to a lot of women that are very scared to go down to the pier before 6:00 AM and after 6:00 PM, and they'll say they're harassed by homeless people. And I've had people tell me, one gentleman just started yelling at them, and they don't know what to do. You know, they know that people have mental issues, and they're kind of at a loss and they're scared. I think we need to really be proactive with this. Manhattan Beach has an excellent program where they've gone from 44 people living on the streets down to six. They have two dedicated police officers to this, and they actually keep track of every single homeless person and say, this person was reunited with his family. We provided money for this person to get housed. So they have a very robust tracking system to actually show that there are results. I think we need to do the same. We need to put in an anti-camping ordinance. There should not be camping on the beach, which I've seen plenty, or people sleeping on benches or on the Green Belt. It's not humane for them, and it scares a lot of the residents, and this is a really big issue for me, and I would very much like to work on this when I'm elected.
Thank you, Elka. Brian?
My night job is, I work at the Comedy Magic Club, I am a comedian, you might have guessed. It's not my day job. I don't know how many jokes you would have to tell to buy a house in Hermosa Beach, but that's a lot of jokes. I'm down there all the time. I check the club when it's closed, all through COVID, I would check out the club. I know our Hermosa homeless population by name, and they know me. I see them on a daily basis. The City Council on Tuesday nights signed the Good Neighbor Pledge that was brought to us by the COG, the Homeless Shelter, the COG, and the police are enforcing the stay-away orders. So if a person in distress gets three, five tickets, three, four, five tickets, they can issue a stay-away order if someone complains about them being harassed, and then the police can then detain them, and they have to appear at the Housing Initiative Court, which some people call Homeless Court. What they're not doing, though, is detaining them the night before their Homeless Initiative Court date, and they take them from detention to the court, because they're not showing up at the Homeless Initiative Court. The functional zero street homeless program in Redondo Beach that we just signed up for is very difficult to achieve in Hermosa Beach, because Redondo has a shelter, and they have tiny homes, and they have a place to put them.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. Again, this is another issue that we're tackling head-on. As mentioned, we talked about this on Tuesday night. Our current outdoor camping ordinances affect our beach and our parks currently. So we're, at our next council meeting, the staff is going to come back with a holistic look of, you know, do we include our sidewalks? The Green Belt right now, theoretically, it's legal, don't go do it. But this is an issue that we're taking seriously. As was mentioned earlier, we have HB Cares, which is a million-dollar grant from Ted Lew's office. We have two civilians that are going out there. It takes many, many interactions with someone suffering from homelessness to get them to accept the help they need. Again, I see this in my day job. We have the Met Team, which is a mental health clinician that rides along with police departments in the South Bay, where we can actually go, and the police will interact with the subjects suffering from mental illness, and they can hopefully get them on either 5150 holds or into homes where they need the help, or they can get the help that they need. What is also coming down the line is the Care Court, which was signed by the governor a few years ago. LA County is finally up to instituting it. There was also a bond measure passed in the spring that is going to get these, hopefully more mental health hospitals and wraparound service homes onboard to get people the help they need. Ultimately, it's a mental health issue, it's a drug issue, and our police are taking this very seriously. You can hear the report on Tuesday night, and looking forward to continue to work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes, yeah, we need to continue. I think we don't have as big a problem as some other cities, but we have a pretty good-sized problem, and we are using the Grand Pass initiative to move people out of camps in town. But we need to continue to work with both Redondo Beach and Learn From Manhattan Beach and try and do the best practices that they're using and that we're using. I think this problem is going to keep coming back to us. I mean, with the economy the way it is right now, I think there'll be more people added to the street. You know, California has the good weather, and people are going to be coming this winter. So we're going to see an influx. I think we need to continue to work with the professionals we've already established and reach out more to the county and get more resources for this winter, and try and get more mental health professionals to these people and try and get them into housing. So, thank you.
Yanni?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I do business with a lot of small beach towns from San Clemente all the way up to Morro Bay, and this is a problem that we see everywhere. Spend a lot of time talking to Chief LeBaron and Captain Phillips. We discussed this at length, and they're proud of where we're at over the last two years with the implementation of Hermosa Cares. This is a team that goes out, knows a lot of these folks by name, and that's amazing. It's important, because homelessness isn't a crime, but it's a problem that needs to be dealt with carefully. But here's the thing, end of story, if there's a crime being committed, we can't have that. So if you see a crime being committed, feel free to call. Call the Hermosa non-emergency hotline, 310-318-0358. This is something we have to work on together, and it's not just the local homeless that people know by name. My biggest concern are the transients that are coming through town. You can see it on the Green Belt, you can see them sitting on the benches every once in a while, and they're passing through from one shelter to the other. So we have to be mindful of that, and I'm very proud of what the police department has done so far. It's everybody that's scared. I coach the Hermosa Valley Surf Team, and I'm often down at the beach before the sun comes up, and there's some scary things that are happening. So it's everybody that's affected by this, our children too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next question. The parking permit application process and rules were changed this past year, making it more challenging for many of our residents to get parking permits. Do you agree with the changes, or what further revisionary changes would you make? Brian, we'll start with you.
I've had a wonderful time walking around this town and campaigning and meeting everyone has been absolutely the best part of it. The residents who are affected by this are not happy. They want to go back to the old way. I think that we can find a happy medium. Now they're getting two passes that they buy, and it used to be you could get up to 10. And you can't have contractors come, you can't have people come to work at your house, you can't have families stay over. So I think that there's got to be a happy medium somewhere in the affected area. Parking has always been an issue in Hermosa Beach. I'm really sad that we let this opportunity of parking lot D slip through our fingers this week, because that could have been a 30 extra spots in that lot if they had stuck to the original plan. Parking is a real challenge here. So in short, I think that we should go back to the way it used to be.
Michael?
Thank you. I'm on record for supporting the changes we made, and I'll tell you a little bit about the problem is, there is over 9,000 parking stickers and passes sold, and we have 3,000 spots in the infected, in the affected area. This is an issue that we tackled head-on. There are definitely some property owners that took advantage of this system, and, you know, one thing I am proud of is we have had tough council meetings, we've had tough agenda items, and we are not afraid of having those conversations. So currently, a resident can get three parking passes. If you are shown that you have four cars that are registered in California, and you do not have a garage on-site, you can get an extra one. One of those can be a transferable hand tag. So there are some tweaks that I would like to make, and one of the things that we discussed in the City Council is it's going to come back every year, because we will make mistakes. And one of the issues that I do see is, you know, there are families out there that have three, four kids that are of driving age, and I think there needs to be some exceptions for folks like that. But with that, there was some rampant abuse to the system. There's also another parking pass that we got rid of, which was a single-day pass if you're having a party, and you could get unlimited amount of them for, I think, $10. And so there was a person in town that got over 100 on the Fourth of July, and I don't think that that was a good program for us to have at all. So, as I said, we've tackled tough problems on the City Council. I'm proud of the work we've done to even have the conversation, but I do think there needs to be tweaks moving forward. I'm excited about being a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
I'd like to remind everyone, you know, that the changes that were made, it took like two years. One year, we didn't even sell passes because they couldn't figure out what they were doing. I mean, talk about a management screw-up. I mean, it took two years to figure out how to make these drastic changes, and now everyone hates it. Sounds like an excellent program. I've lived in the parking zone for almost 40 years, so I can tell you, I was here, I bought my first pass in 85, and it worked fine for decades. Obviously, it grew. It wasn't 9,000 when it started in 85, and there was abuses going on. But things have changed. You can't even get a permit for a guest permit. I can't get one. Can't get a guest permit. I can't have a friend over, and they got to park in my driveway, I've got my cars there, I've got my kid's car. I mean, it's just not friendly anymore. And I remember when they were working on this, one of the councilmen told me, hey, we're going to raise this thing to $180. And I was like, why are you doing that? He says, you're rich, you can afford it. And I was just so flummoxed over that. I was like, I can't believe this is an issue. I think we need to go back to the original plan, invite the residents who are using the passes to come in, and spend a little time figuring out how to make it more friendly for the residents and for the business owners that need to get passes also. So I'd like to go back.
Thank you. Yanni?
Yeah, I lived in the affected area for quite some time. You know, a quick little anecdote on Monterey, and, you know, as everybody knows, you know, on a Thursday night, you park your car and do your best not to move it until Monday, and that's every weekend. So I understand the value of the parking passes, particularly if you have young kids. My wife was pregnant, and if it wasn't for the parking pass that we could give to her mom and my mom to come and help, life would have been super tough. So I am in favor of going back and collaborating with residents in the affected area and come to a revised solution. And it is unfortunate that we're here, because some people exploited it for their own personal benefit. So Hermosa Beach, you know, when one person, you know, takes advantage of something, it affects us all. So I do want to go back and work on this collaboratively, because as someone who's been in that area, I understand the struggles when it comes, or I understand the value and comfort that those parking passes bring to us under certain circumstances, like a pregnant wife. Thank you.
Thank you. And Elka?
I live in the impacted zone, and I don't think one of my neighbors is happy with this program. You know, they say we pay plenty of taxes, and I can't even park in front of my own house. So this is a failed program, I believe. There was maybe a couple of people abusing it, but I don't think everybody should be punished. We need to go back to the original program that worked, so people who have children can have them park in front of their homes. It's, I don't even know why it was changed, there was never a real explanation for that, but if it works, don't try to redo something. And I think now they're even talking about parking in, you'd get a permit for certain zones in Hermosa. So if someone has a parking permit for South Hermosa, you can't park in North Hermosa and vice versa, which will make the system even more convoluted and confusing. Let's keep it simple, let's give the residents the parking they need.
Thank you, Elka. On to the next question. Are you in favor of the Chamber of Congress's suggestion to create a Tourism Industrial District in Hermosa Beach, increasing hotel taxes and using the funds to attract tourists to Hermosa Beach? Michael, we'll start with you.
Thank you. So TIDS or Tourism Improvement Districts or BIDS, Business Improvement Districts, is a choice by the businesses who want to form it. And it's, they're kind of self-taxing themselves to then have the money to fund various outreach programs, various capital improvement projects in their area if they want to hire someone for extra security or, you know, extra cleanliness in the area, that's up to their choice. So we did front money for these businesses to explore setting up a Tourism Improvement District or a bid, and we have been, as a City Council, have been very supportive of them if they decide to go down that route. So ultimately, it's up to the businesses involved to join.
City's been supportive, got it. Michael?
Well, I served on the council in the early 2000s, two terms, and there's a fellow out there, Ron Newman, who remembers the bid we were going to do in the 2000s, and we had it all, we fronted money and we brought it all forward, and then at the end of the day, besides Ron's business, no one else wanted to pay. And so we can do that again. It's a good exercise, we can waste 50, 60, 100 grand on another one, but I don't think it's going to go forward. I think maybe you should just do a simple survey and find out if, you know, Survey Monkey or something that's almost free, instead of hiring another consultant to spend another $100,000 and walk away with a plan we don't use. So I think they're a great idea, and if the businesses want it, they don't even need the city's help. I mean, they can get this thing, there's resources out there, they don't even need the city. So maybe we should stay out of their way.
Yanni?
1.2 million tourists we see on average. I'm in favor of anything that will bring in more tourism, particularly if we're looking long-term. We have the Olympics right around the corner in four years, the whole world is going to be looking at us. That is another opportunity for an alternative stream of revenue. I do agree that there are probably simpler ways to come to a conclusion, such as taking, making, or generating a survey for the community. But once again, we do have to consider that we are a globally recognized tourism town, and and the whole world is going to be looking at us. They already are, so it's coming. Thank you.
Elka?
Can you repeat the first part of that question? I couldn't hear.
Sure. Are you in favor of putting in place a tourism industrial district, increasing hotel taxes and using the funds to attract tourists?
I think I'm in favor of the economic development strategy that a group of very invested business owners, property owners, and residents promoted. They wanted, actually, they came up with 30 ideas from better lighting downtown to streamlining the permitting process. I think we need to revitalize our downtown. And if the businesses want to do a bid, I'm all in favor of that. But I think they need support from the city and the residents. You know, we need to shop local, but we need to have stores where we want to go and improve the look of downtown and have a vision. And once we have that in place, that will attract not only tourists, but people from the surrounding communities because they'll have a destination city for them to spend their money here and their time here.
And Brian?
So we already have a hotel tax, okay? Who's going to pay for, this is another committee to, you know, create a tourism improvement district? It's very difficult to get the businesses to work together for different reasons, mostly because of their, all their CUPs, their conditional use permits are different. Like Michael said, maybe Ron Newman was the only one who wanted to step forward and pay for a certain project. I actually wanted to get a lot of the Pier Avenue, Pier Plaza nightclubs to come together and pay for security together as a district security. And it just fell like a lead balloon. Nobody wanted to hear it because the businesses are already strapped. They don't have an extra $300 to pay for extra programs. You know, we're losing businesses on the Pier Plaza. So and Elka mentioned the Economic Development Committee. That was, you know, before COVID, that was, you know, 2020 to 2022. There were 30 strategies laid out, which were pretty good, and none of them have been done. So.
Thank you. We're now going to shift a little bit and talk about accomplishments. What are your two or three greatest accomplishments and outcomes over the past four years for the betterment of the city and its residents that you personally were spearheading? I'm going to start this one with Michael. Can you?
Accomplishments? Well, I mean, I can go back to when I served on council. One of the big accomplishments was we stopped them from building 3,000 condos over at the power plant site. They were zoned for 3,000 condominiums, and the city filed suit against Redondo, and we were able to stop that development from coming forward and putting more traffic on our streets, pollution, and high density housing. As far as accomplishments here in the city, you know, I run my business. I'm not an elected anymore, so I don't know that I can influence policy. I do come up sometimes and speak on items, but typically, they don't listen to me. So I would say that, you know, I look forward to, you know, creating new ideas and implementing them if elected. And the few things I'd like to do is reduce the amount of consultants that we hire. We're in the midst of a million dollar consultancy that's going to give us ideas for 30 years for our parks. I just really wish I was that vendor. I mean, I would love to get a million dollars to run around and look at the two major parks we have, South Park and Valley. I mean, we have some other little parks, but I don't know that we need a million dollars to plan them. Some of them are very small. And so, I mean, we've got to stop spending millions of dollars for plans we're going to put on the shelf.
Yanni?
Am I limited to just two?
Two to three.
Two to three. Parks and Rec Commissioner, for the last 10 years, being in my third term, I've had the wonderful opportunity to work with the community and help nurture the reason they live in Hermosa Beach, and that is their recreational activities, whether it's surfing, volleyball, walking on the strand, walking on the greenbelt. And the one thing that I learned is how passionate everybody is about their activities in Hermosa. This is why we pay the high premium to live here. And I'll share this with everybody. I remember, two years in, somebody threatened to kill me because I couldn't get their band to play concerts on the beach. It wasn't even under our jurisdiction. So people are passionate. Hermosa Beach, I am passionate. And I've got a long list of accomplishments, but I'm going to start with two that I know have immediately raised your quality of life. Number one, pickleball. I helped spearhead bringing pickleball to Hermosa Beach. There are health benefits. It is an activity that bridges age gaps. We have seniors that play with their teenagers. It is wonderful. And I listened to you, Hermosa Beach, loud and clear in the last campaign cycle. The number one request was bring back concerts on the beach. Myself, city staff, and Parks and Rec, we brought it back to you for free, under budget, and it's not going anywhere with the original participants that helped made it successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elka?
I would say my biggest accomplishment was covering the city for the Easy Reader newspaper. So I went to those city council meetings and stayed here. So you wouldn't have to stay four or five hours and brought you the story the next day. I covered the city council. I covered new businesses that were in town. I did profiles on people in town. And I think being part of the community like that informs you of who your neighbors are and what's going on, and that's vital here. And that communication is very important. And I think that's what makes us a town, and that's what being a neighbor is all about. And let's see, during COVID, I helped out some seniors and delivered food to people who couldn't leave their homes. They were kind of high-risk people. But otherwise, being able to talk to you and learn about you and share who we are is one of my biggest accomplishments.
Thank you. And Brian?
Thank you. Through COVID, it was very tough in the downtown district. When Pier Plaza started to open again, I really wanted to bring music back and bring music outside. I remember the days that I was out there playing on the pier. There was nobody out there but me and the coronavirus. That was it. Before the Comedy and Magic Club opened up again, I started with George Lopez at the Brew's Hall, which is currently closed. But we brought comedy back after COVID, and it was safe to come out again. I probably employed 500 comedians to keep them in their homes. I would spend every day down in Pier Plaza trying to get music back into different venues. I currently probably employ 30 musicians on a monthly basis. But I would spend all my time during the day speaking with our homeless population. This is why they know me. And when I say I know them, I buy them food. I have gotten some of our homeless into recovery, into treatment, and off the streets.
Thank you. And Mike?
Thank you. This is probably why I'm a terrible politician. I hate talking about myself and accomplishments. But one of the most proud moments in the last few years was when I was currently mayor in 2022. Coming out of COVID, one thing that I've always been about is accessibility and transparency and trying to break down, bring City Hall to the people. And so came up with this crazy idea of the conversation and cleanups. And so every month, we chose different parts of the park, the beach, Clark Field. And we got the city staff to come together with the community and improve it. We're all doers in this town. And one of my favorite days is when we got all the little ballers out from Hermosa Little League. And what we thought was going to be probably a three-hour painting experiment or a project, with so many volunteers that showed up, it took probably 30 minutes to an hour to repaint all of the walls at Clark Field, while also having the accessibility for city staff. And then also, being on city council is how we've been able to retool our police department. As I mentioned earlier, we're on the verge of existence as a police department. We listen to the community. We got a new chief. We got the new leadership in there. He's embracing technology. He's embracing the latest trends and good police work. And that's something that I've been proud to be a part of. And I see my colleagues in the room, and I thank them for the support and what we've been able to do for the police department to keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. The next question's kind of a two-part question. So I'd really like to answer both of the two pieces to it. One, what was the greatest accomplishment in the city that you were not involved in? And the second question is, what did the city council do or not do in the past four years that you would have done differently? So I think we're starting with Yanni. And I'll give you an extra 10 seconds.
No, thank you. No, thank you. Wow, I'm trying to blank? I mean, there's been so many wonderful things that have happened that I haven't been involved with. Gosh. I'm trying to blank.
How about the second one? How about the second part?
Say that again. Yeah, go again.
All right. The first one is what was accomplished that you weren't involved in that was good. The second one is, what did the city council do or not do in the past four years that you would have done differently? You can start with that.
Yeah, so I'll start with the second one. One thing that I was adamantly against, I spoke here in chambers, was just the idea of messing with our parking meter times. To me, it was completely egregious for the simple fact that as a beach enthusiast, the idea to even take our parking meters going from starting them at 10 to eight scared me. So if you look at, Hermosa Beach is popular for its beach activities, surfing, walking, volleyball, all of which have limited sponsorship dollars. And everybody loves to take pictures with the Olympic gold medalists. And if we take away those couple of hours that they treasure, where it's empty, quiet, where they can hone their skill, every penny counts. And I'm not joking. If you talk to any athlete, particularly volleyball players, every penny counts. Sponsorship dollars are thin. So I was really opposed to that consideration of messing with the hours. I'm glad that they kept them at 10 o'clock.
Thank you. Elka?
I guess I wasn't involved in the pickleball courts, Yanni. But I have reported on the housing element, the parking permits, zoning issues, and other city council agenda items. I think the thing that I would do differently would be to better communicate with the residents. I think a lot of times, the residents felt blindsided. They didn't know what was going on. It was kind of a last-minute thing, late on the agenda, and they would scramble to come down to City Hall. And they had two minutes to give their input. And it probably would have behooved the city to just give a little more respect to the residents and get their viewpoints. Because you're all smart, you're all engaged, and you all have an opinion. And that is what a democracy is about.
Brian?
So how far back can we go?
Four years.
Oh, four years. Oh, that blows my answer completely. I'm still going to go back. I am proud of Measure O, stopping the oil drilling in Hermosa. I was not involved in that, other than voting for it. Yes, it did cost our city a pretty penny, but we handled it, and we're handling it the best way possible. And can you repeat the second part?
Yeah. What did the city do or city council do that you would have done differently?
So what the city council is not doing now that I would do differently is I would immediately settle a mountain of litigation that's going to be facing the city. We are in dire straits. It's, we have a number of lawsuits. And I'm not talking about the slip and fall lawsuits that every city gets. Those, I say, we fight. I say we fight those and don't pay those. But we are under some serious litigation in this town that if we don't take care of it fast, it's going to bankrupt the city.
Thanks. Mike?
That's news to me. Plan Hermosa, I know it's a little bit further behind, but I got on the Emergency Preparedness Advisory Commission right when Plan Hermosa was finishing up. That is our general plan. It's our guiding document for 20 to 50 years. I'm very proud of the work that all the stakeholders did, the years that the council and the commission worked together to create the guiding document for our city. And the four years is going to be a little bit tough for me. But one thing that I have done, and I think a lot of people can attest to it, is the last four years, I have been accessible. I've always been level-headed up here. I've listened, and I'm proud of all the work I have done. And I know as of recent, true cannot be said true with all my colleagues. But you've always had a council member and myself that has listened. It's been accessible. My number's public, and I'm proud of the work in that regard. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, what would you have done differently than was done?
The last four years?
Yeah. I mean, did you vote against anything that went through? Or did you vote in favor of something that wasn't passed?
And I've owned this up completely. I actually wore the T-shirt in the dunk tank at Fiesta Hermosa for a fundraiser. But we own our own beach in Hermosa Beach. LA County during COVID shut down our beaches. We had to take an up or down vote on closing our beaches during COVID. We did vote to close them. I wore a shirt in the dunk tank that said, I voted to close a beach. Hopefully, raised a lot of money for charity. Thank you.
Greatest accomplishment that I'm not involved in? I think that the police chief deserves credit for having a fully-staffed police department. I mean, the environment, I was recently in the airport, and there's signs all over the airport looking for security people and customs agents. And, I mean, there's a lot of these agencies that are not getting enforcement people to apply for jobs. It's, they're difficult, they're risky, and, you know, we're just not getting the amount of people. So I would say that the city and the police chief deserve kudos for having a fully-staffed police department in the current environment. Things that I don't think went so well, I would say, is the council rotation. We used to have, for about 45 years, a simple rotation of the mayor. Went about with not much fanfare. Everyone just rotated, and there was never any fights. Then all of a sudden, we didn't let Haney Fangary be mayor because someone claimed he wasn't fit enough. And we got sued, it cost the city about $250,000. Probably a bad decision to not let him be mayor. I don't think he would have killed anybody. So that was a really bad decision. And then now we're still struggling with it because now I guess we vote, and you got to be, you know, kiss your neighbor to be allowed to be mayor. And I think it's wrong. A lot of people, when they vote, know that their friend might be mayor at one point during their term, and they like that. And the voters like that. And I think we need to go back to that. The other thing is cutting public participation by 35%. Awful, awful decision.
Thank you. All right, we're going to shift our focus now to look forward rather than behind. What's the biggest issue currently facing Hermosa Beach? And what would you do to address it? Elka, we'll start with you.
I think we have a couple of issues. The main ones would be public safety. I'd say the homelessness. And as I said before, we really need to address this. We need to find housing for people that are living on the streets. I think another issue is our downtown. There are far too many vacant storefronts. And I think we need to have someone in the city that is working with new businesses to recruit them here, kind of a liaison to shepherd them through the permitting process and what they need to do to be up to code and get it done quickly. That will help revitalize our downtown. And included in that is parking, of course. Because I'll go downtown, and I circle a couple of times, and I just say, okay, I give up. And I just go to my next destination. I think we also need to, once again, the communication, be in touch with the residents, keep them informed on what is going on, and have a user-friendly city. The website is very complicated. You look at the agenda, I have sometime, and I'm a reporter, and I had no idea what half of the stuff meant. So make it more user-friendly.
Thank you. Brian?
There are numerous issues facing our city There are numerous issues facing our city that I do think we're dealing with adequately. And I do think our police department is doing a wonderful job. There is new technology coming in. There's a tagging mechanism to tag a car with RFID if they're going to be involved in this high-speed chase. For some reason, it hasn't been deployed yet, but I know that we have it. When I when I went and toured the police department, and I did do a ride-along, I was asked, I thought I came up with a brilliant idea. I was like, hey, why don't we do breathalyzers down at, you know, down at the parking lot A there and and just see people before they get into their cars? And they said to me, we've got them. They're doing it. They're 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 mobile breathalyzers that will be deployed soon. I'm not sure what they're waiting for, but it's coming very quickly to prevent the drunk driving that could happen from leaving our downtown area. I wish that the police would return to a visible presence downtown, because I think that would calm a lot of the behavior that goes on down there. Parking is obviously a huge issue in our town. I would immediately put the brakes on the parking lot D plan that you just voted in two days ago, and I would go back to the original plan that Mr. Rob Seaman is sitting right there in his five minutes made a better plan with a three-level parking garage.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. I'm going to break it into two. One is this creating environment where business can thrive, and that is what we're currently doing with the zoning update. The planning commission's working hard right now on looking at our zoning ordinances in municipal code. And with that, there's going to be some some changes with, you know, parking requirements. How do we create investment in our downtown area? And I think that will spur, hopefully, more businesses coming in, filling up those empty storefronts. And then the second part of it is our infrastructure. We have a massive backlog of tens of millions of dollars in infrastructure. As I mentioned, the roads, the Prospect Project repaved about 5% of our 40 miles of road. We have another project that we just approved at our last CIP, and it should be going out to bid early next year. But that's for about 10% of our roads. So we have a back-to-basics approach coming out of COVID, and with that, investing in the vital infrastructure of our park, streets, and sidewalks. Thank you.
Michael?
I think we need to work on just our budget in general. We need to, you know, cut some positions, free up cash to do some of these capital projects. We need to live within our means and figure ways out to get more done with less. We need to stop hiring consultants and look to ways to use our residents and the intelligence and the the amount of retirees that are very talented to help us do some of these consulting things, to give the council reports. And I think that's available. It's been done in the past. I think that we have an opportunity here to, you know, change the course of how we go by, you know, being more accountable to get projects on time. That's one thing we don't do. We're never we're never saying, hey, what did we do right with this project? What did we do wrong? I'd like more accountability. Thank you.
Yanni?
There's a lot. But me personally, and what I've heard walking and talking, and even within my own family, is the perception of what's going on up here on the dais and with the community in chambers and out in public. There's a lot of personality conflicts going on. Speaking in public is scary. Walking in the chambers is scary. And I feel like the dysfunction that the community is seeing right now is precluding residents who want to come in and talk about public safety, talk about the roads. They're intimidated to come in. So what I want to do is really stand on my 10 years of experience hosting and running meetings. I want to be that familiar face, that friendly face that invites the community to come in here and know you'll be listened to. I will work collaboratively with every single councilman, stakeholder, and person who comes in here. I want to change the public perception of this city council for the community. I want everybody to feel safe and welcome here.
Thanks. I love it when you kind of lead me into the next question. Given council meetings run late into the evenings with there's been an increased lack of civility and perceived difficulty communicating with city leaders, how will you make council meetings more accessible, increase civility, and open communications? We'll start this one with Mike.
Thank you. As mentioned earlier, our agendas are complex, and that's something I've done ever for every single city council meeting I've made, or I've created a single image document that I put on my social media that shows every single agenda item that we're going to touch. So if you have any questions, it's kind of a down-and-dirty look of everything that's coming up in the city council meeting. But with that, I'm I will address, there's been a lot of tumultuous conversations recently in city council. My two colleagues here can call BS if I'm lying, but I talk to every one of our council members. I've tapped them as my singular Brown Act buddy. We can only talk to one other council member prior to a meeting on a certain agenda item. But I try to use all of my colleagues, their wealth of knowledge, and then also reach out to all the stakeholders. Everything that I do, my phone number is public, my emails, I try to be as responsive to, involved with coaching, and I'll ask, you know, all the all the parents there at Clark Field or at AYSO Games, hey, what do you think about this? It's coming up on on our Tuesday agenda. And just try to get as many stakeholders involved. It was a privilege to sit on the EDC Committee and really commit to listening to our businesses and our property owners in town. But my book of work for the last five years, I think, is reflective of how I will lead for the next four years. Thank you.
Michael?
I think the the key to shortening the meetings and to get more done in in less time is preparation, you know, understanding the issues, reading your packet, doing extra research, having the time to do that. I have the time to do that. I've recently freed up a lot of free time for this job, and I will be able to spend as many hours as it takes to be ready. And I hope to come to meetings with concise arguments. I'd like us to stop spending so much time listening to presentations and thanking the community and focusing more on work. I think we I was at a meeting recently. It took an hour and a half before the meeting started. It's way too long. We need to maybe get rid of some of these reports. We have the Public Works Director. We have the police coming in. We used to just read a report and be ready. We didn't have a 30-minute presentation on a new vehicle we just bought. I was here the other night. It took 15 minutes to describe an electric vehicle we were buying. I was bored to tears by the end. So I think we need to be prepared. When I got into office, I gave a four-minute speech. And when I left, I gave a three-minute speech. No one's beaten me. You can look on Granicus anywhere. If you review old meetings, I am the shortest speaker of all five. So I talk less and do more. I hope you'll vote for me.
Yanni?
These days, I'm the one who talks less. Take a look at the last 10 years of how I've run my Parks and Rec meetings, and I do appreciate Mr. Keegan recognizing that less is more. Let's move forward. Let's be mindful of everybody here. Everybody has families at home. There's homework that needs to be done. There's chores that needs to be done. We just need to go to bed and get some rest. But the solution to that is simple. We come prepared. Do your homework. Don't study while you're up here. Now, speaking about time, absolutely. That's something that I have the luxury of having, too. I'm replacing a lot of my volunteer time from the chamber to coaching to other volunteer activities that's already hardwired in my volunteer life and replacing it with honor and privilege if I do get this opportunity to serve on the council. So coming prepared, having the time to do it, and then also, we can rework the agenda items. We can reprioritize items that we know are hot button to the front. Once again, I've run meetings for the last 10 years, and I hope I have the honor and the privilege to continue that experience and do it up here as a city councilman. Thank you.
Great. Elka?
On Tuesday night, I came to the meeting at about 6:30 and waited till 11 o'clock at night to speak. I started speaking, and you have three minutes, and I think I went over by 10 seconds and was told to wrap it up, which I did. But I think one of the reasons the meetings are so long is because you have proclamations of the city manager's report, the police chief's report, before you actually get to city business. And while I think those proclamations and that input is important, perhaps we can have another meeting with just those and try to streamline the city council meetings so we don't have to wait till 11 at night to speak. I also am concerned with certain council members attacking people who come to speak and saying they're wrong and fact-checking them. That is not the role of a city council member. Their role is to listen and to take input, and they can do whatever they want with it, but it is not berating people who come here and speak. And I've been the recipient of that, and I know other people have as well. And it's not fair, and it's not right.
Thank you. Brian?
I concur with some of my colleagues up here. Coming prepared is probably the most important thing. I am an avid reader, and I will read the packets and do my homework before I get to a meeting. I also agree that the city manager's report and the chief of police report are, they're fine, but they do take up valuable time in a council meeting, and they are the glowing report that they can possibly give. It's all the good stuff. They're not coming up here reporting what they're doing wrong. It's it's a very glossy presentation that they put together every time. As far as, you can't really put a limit on the meeting. We can't just cut it off at, you know, at three hours or whenever. We have to go until the business is done. But community involvement is achievable. I think that right now, we're streaming on YouTube, which is great. But our cable channels that we're on, you know, are not highly watched. We should also stream on Facebook and stream on Instagram, and we should let our friends and family know the council meetings are, you know, the first and the last Tuesdays every month. When you talk to people, go out and say, hey, are you coming to the council meeting? We're going to talk about this. I've seen Mike's presentation before the the meetings where he gives the agenda items. Excellent. It's it's all about community engagement. Because when I talk to the community and I let them know what we're doing here in the debate, they're excited. I see some of my neighbors coming in when they didn't even know about the debate, and they're coming down and here at the council. Thank you.
Thank you. If we have budget challenges, because it sounds like we want, there's a lot of things we want to do and a lot of things haven't been done yet, what budget line items or capital improvements projects would you deprioritize? And Brian, I think I passed you over last time, so we'll start with you.
The capital improvement projects, deprioritizing them isn't going to make a difference because they're deprioritizing themselves. There's 34 of them just sitting there on the shelf. Prioritize them.
Or budget line items, too.
You know, budget line items, 60% of our general fund is going to pay salaries for our city workers. I think that I encourage the entire community to go visit a website called transparentcalifornia.com and find out what we're paying for employees here in Hermosa Beach. Hermosa Beach is the fastest-growing and largest employer in in town right now. So I think there's some line items there, and the personnel increases, you know, over the last three years has been 30%. And there's, I have a documents here somewhere with the unfunded allocations that are coming in the 2025 budget. There's there's a number of things in that that can be taken out. I would still prioritize the city yard. That can be done. We just had a fire at the Base 3, which is in the Fullerton Consulting. That has to be done now. That has to be fixed. I don't even think we're back in Base 3 yet. You know, are we back in Base 3 yet? Did they open that? So, you know, the the items that they need to prioritize, those unfinished projects.
Yes. But I'm asking, what would you deprioritize? Mike?
Thank you. Ultimately, government is a is a service business, so we we have to budget. And I think actually 60% is pretty low for most municipalities when it comes to the general fund and personnel costs. So with that, we we provide a service. If you cut personnel, then consulting costs go up because the works need to get done. And so it's this never-ending cycle of how do we prioritize and get get staff there? Our planning department, if we cut staff and plans, then the developers and single the the property owners who are developing property, those wait times are going to increase. Those, there is cost recovery there. There's fees for service there for the staff time and for the consultants that we are using while we don't have staff there due to recruitment issues in the city. Our pay, when we do negotiations, is based on comparable agencies or market basket, if you will, of cities. And we negotiate based on that average. We are not top of the line. But the truth of the matter is, we are in LA County. LA County is very expensive, and we are having major issues with recruitment, especially for public engineers and our and our Public Works Department for the capital improvement budget. So yes, there are some consultants that are coming in for that. I think there are some capital improvement projects that we can cut and deprioritize. But with those, like the Ballard projects on the strand, I do, I am passionate about the strand safety, but some of those projects like that I would deprioritize than we have. Thank you.
Great. Michael?
I think that we could deprioritize several of the CIP, the list. I agree, the Ballard, the Ballards is is number one. I mean, that's a very expensive process. Maybe there's some other simpler and lower-cost methods to control traffic that gets onto the strand. I think that line items, we could cut the city manager's office by 40%. I mean, first off, we made it about 110 years without an assistant. And now we have an assistant city manager, and I think there's also a budget analyst on top of that. So those are two extra positions that have come about in the last five years. We can get rid of those. We currently pay a publicist to do our public information work and and make sure the council was a meeting a couple of weeks ago where they spent a couple of hours talking about what, how we're going to put out a press release. Let's get rid of that department completely. We made it again 110 years without someone to put out press releases for us, and we survived. Maybe they won't come out the next day. Maybe it takes two days, whatever. Right now, it actually takes longer because the person's not even in the city. They're outside the city. So that's some line items. So yeah, take a close look at the budget and move some things around.
Yanni?
Well, you got me again. I couldn't tell you which I would deprioritize, but I'll tell you which I would prioritize. Very simple, 14th Street bathrooms, haven't been touched in probably 50 years, one of the scariest places in Hermosa Beach. Those of you who know the 14th Street bathrooms, right in front of the beach house, needs to be improved, much like Second Street and 22nd, and modernized. Also, the Clark Field pass-through from Loma to the field. Those bleachers are terrifying. I have a personal friend who fell and hit their head and required brain surgery. They need to be improved. Now, let me talk about this this discussion about personnel. I feel like the general public doesn't understand the benefits of some of the additional personnel that we're benefit, that we are going to benefit from. The two additions to Parks and Rec for filming and special events. Now, as somebody who's been in that department for 10 years, I can tell you the bottleneck and the loss of opportunity that we have seen due to not being able to fulfill filming opportunities. If there are parents in the room, you guys may know Blippi. He wanted to come and film in Hermosa Beach, and he couldn't because we couldn't file the application. It usually takes Hermosa, it takes us 14 days. It should take the industry standard of four. I know several people in the film industry, in the commercial industry, that say, we want to come to Hermosa Beach. We want to give you our money. But now we can as a result of the film person. Then we can talk about special events later. This is easy for us to make new streams of revenue. Thank you.
Elka?
I would deprioritize all the consultants and studies we do and have our existing staff take on some of those responsibilities. And I would prioritize working on Fridays, perhaps with a staggered staff. Other city do, they do that. They have that kind of schedule. And I think it would help the residents, and it would be a more productive city government.
Thank you. I think we have time for maybe one more question. Hermosa is the only city within the South Bay without a dog park. How do you feel about permitting a dog park in Hermosa? We're going to start with this one with Michael Keegan.
This is a question that's been on the table since I served, you know, 15 years ago. So we could not move the needle. We don't have that many parks, and it's difficult. There's more dogs than ever since COVID. So I would say that, you know, I'm going to put a dog park in. I just don't know where I'm going to put it. Thank you.
Yanni?
Like Michael said, you know, this is a conversation that we've had for quite some time. In the last 10 years, I believe it's come up to Parks and Rec several times. We love our furry friends. Oh, my gosh, I have three dogs. And I understand the value of walking them and letting them enjoy Hermosa as much as we do. I have considered this and thought about it. We need to find out where we carve out this space. Is it Valley Park? Is it South Park? We have to reach out to our community and see which location they feel is best. We have to see the effects that it'll have to the sports that are hosted, whether it's AYSO or other activities on the grass, and how, and we have to examine it from a hygiene perspective as well. The good thing is, we have a dog park up on 190th and Redondo, we have one in El Segundo and Manhattan Beach. So although that's not a solution, we need to go back to examining the options. But keep in mind, once, once a change like this is made, we are giving away a certain part of our green space. Love the dogs.
Elka?
I actually met Paul at a Walk Street in Hermosa where they closed off two sections of 21st Street so the dogs could play with each other and run around freely. And I think what most dog owners want is that in a park setting. And I actually have doggy bandanas because I support finding some kind of dog park where people can get together, dogs can run, they can get to know each other. So if you want one of those bandanas, let me know, and that's my support of the dog parks.
Love the dogs. I've always had dogs. I don't know if you can hear at home, but we have a dog in the back that's, there he is right there, voicing his opinion. He definitely wants a dog park in Hermosa Beach. So if we're going to take a vote right now, that's one right there. And this could either win or lose me the election right now. Not only am I in favor of a dog park, I'm in favor of a dog beach. Or ours for a dog beach. Yes, it's sanitary, it has to be sanitary, it's a concern. Dog beach hours, down at the end, close to Redondo, we, maybe a temporary fence, and we do have to clean the sand. Dog beach, dog beach hours, I'd want to talk about it.
Okay, and Mike?
Thank you. I do have a 10-year-old furry friend at home who is probably barking right now, excited about this conversation. You know, we did hire a consultant to do our Parks Master Plan, and there is a joint meeting coming up. It actually, Parks, the dog park came up as number two on the survey for needs or for wishes from the community. As Yanni mentioned, it's a matter of where. We're 1.4 square miles, a big majority of that is our beach, and the other big majority of our open space is our, is our green belt. So it's where, and it's listening to the stakeholders, and I encourage everyone to participate in our upcoming joint commission meeting about the Parks Master Plan and let your voices be heard about where, because guess what about city government? You're going to say we're going to do a Valley Park, there's going to be 80 people in here that are going to be upset about it, who are direct impacts of that. You're going to do it at South Park, there's going to be different 80 people in here. And that's the joy of what we have to do and balance stakeholder input. But yes, I think dogs off-leash in a confined area is actually very healthy for their ability to run, but we are lucky that there is one in Manhattan Beach, there is one in Redondo. It's how does it fit into this community is what matters. Thank you.
We're going to have time for a speed round of one last question, 30 seconds each, though. So we have great beach and with a desire for lots of events on the beach. Do you think the number of permitted large beach events is too many, just right, or not enough? We're going to start this with Yanni.
I think, as the architect of the special events policy, I'm proud of what we've accomplished. I think we have the perfect amount, we've identified the perfect partners, and we've identified the events that celebrate our beach culture and have a positive economic impact on our downtown business area. Keep in mind, we've also been mindful of implementing the Nothing Weekend twice during peak season where no events can be done. So the answer is, perfect amount, and we're keeping our beaches empty for everybody twice in the calendar year.
Elka?
I had a conversation with the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and she is actually assessing the economic impact of some of these events, which is one of the reasons we do them. And I think once we know which ones are good and which ones are positive and what the residents want, then we could look at this. But I think we have a pretty good balance of items for now.
Brian?
I'm going to take a different take on this. The events on the beach, I wish during the offseason, we could focus on events during the week, Monday through Thursday. Can we generate interest from the surrounding communities to come visit Hermosa Beach? It's always on the weekends, everything, peak season or not peak season, it's always on the weekends. Some venues, the Comedy Magic Club, for example, they don't need help on the weekends. They need help Monday through Thursday.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. I am proud of the work that the Parks and Rec Commission has done and the city council has done in balancing the needs of the residents with drawing in visitors. It is a very big balance on how do we support our small businesses and getting the right events at the right time. A lot of the low-impact volleyball tournaments for the youth, minimal impact for setup, but they bring a ton of money with the people who come in from out of state, stay in hotels, shop in restaurants. So getting the data from the chamber is definitely going to be important to figure out what are the right events moving forward. Thank you.
And Michael?
I think any event policy is really a moving item. I mean, what happens is, you know, one year you book something that's so popular, you know, that it overwhelms the city, or we have like a Teen Choice Awards where, you know, half the town loves it, half the town hates it. So I think that, you know, right now, I'd say we're running a good amount of events and seeing people are entertained and enjoy the events, and it's not overwhelming us. And I think that each year, we have to reevaluate it and make changes.
That's great. All right, well, thank you, guys. We're now going to move to our closing statements. You'll each have one and a half minutes to make your closing statement, and we're going to go in reverse order, so we'll start with Yanni.
Glasses on or off? I'll keep them on because they're getting bad. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Leadership Hermosa Beach. I am truly a product of your program. Respectfully, my experience and civic resume is the best of all the candidates running for city council this year. I rolled up my sleeves three decades ago and have not stopped serving Hermosa Beach since. Under my leadership, we brought back concerts on the beach, added more volleyball and beach tennis courts. I introduced pickleball to town, brought the Rams draft to town, helped develop the Hermosa Open, co-authored the special events policy, developed the Hermosa Valley Surf Team, promoted our beach culture on an international level, and co-produced everyone's favorite event, Snow Fest, which I will bring back to Hermosa Beach. I'm running for city council to make sure our citizens have the highest quality of life, whether you're a toddler or a senior, a native or just moved to town, a homeowner or a renter, a business owner or a retiree, volleyball player or a surfer. I am here for you, I'm here to listen. I will be the friendly face of Hermosa Beach Government. Through my leadership, I will work with all community stakeholders to bring you a safer Hermosa, a more vibrant business ecosystem. I will make sure that your life in Hermosa Beach is shaped the same way it's shaped mine. I am respectfully asking for your vote. Thank you, Hermosa. I love you.
Thank you for hosting the event tonight. You know, when I decided to run for council, the first thing some old councilmen and people who I ran into in town said, had I lost my mind? And why and how would I want to do this? You've already seen the abuse. And so I looked at them, I said, you know, I'm probably not the candidate if you think everything's running perfectly. I'm probably the candidate for more change, reevaluation, budget cuts, reorganization, just to get rid of, you know, everything about optics and actually produce some work. Take attendance to make sure people actually come to work. I mean, people are working remotely, they're not here, you go to City Hall, people aren't available, they're gone, people are on comp time off, we're holding events that they spend a few hours at and then they take comp time off. I don't know, I just think we need to reorganize and focus on getting more value for our dollar. So I hope that I can get some support on this from the electorate, and I look forward to serving you. I think we need to have a council that has vigorous debate and has three-to-two decisions, and people are listened to, and their voices are heard. If everything's a 5-0, it's probably not that great of a debate, and you're not learning much from it. So I look forward to serving you. I look forward to your vote. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Paul, for moderating this forum, and thank you to the Leadership Hermosa for hosting it tonight, and thank you all for skipping the 49er Seahawks game to be here. It's been wonderful sharing my vision and continue to share my vision for a little best little beach city, and I will continue and I pledge to continue to listen to yours for the next four years. My focus the last five years in this campaign has always been about public safety and quality of life issues. When I leave this city for 24 hours at a time, I want to make sure my family and my wife and two little kids are safe. Every decision needs to factor in public safety, and that's why I am the best candidate for this position. I will also work to preserve our beach culture, our small-town culture, and unique aesthetic heritage as well. We encourage local events that produce, that help promote our small-business community. When I am off of work, I spend most of my days at the park, coaching AYSO, coaching Little League, and I see the quality of our sidewalks or lack thereof. I see, you know, go on the Hermosa app, I plug in that the curbs need to be improved, the streets need to get improved, and we need to increase accessibility and the safety for all of our community. Hermosa Beach is my home, I love this town. I want to make sure that we protect our small-town character, support our local vibrant economy and our quality of life. Thanks again for your time this evening. I hope I earned your vote again, and for more information, micdotoy.com, or you can follow any of my social media, @DotoyForHermosa. Thank you.
Brian?
Thank you, Paul, for hosting the debate. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for those who are watching online. It's been a wonderful experience. I'm not part of the political scene yet in this town, I'm trying to be. I would like to thank all the candidates. It's really been great meeting you and talking to everyone. Everyone has been wonderful on the campaign trail. I think in the council meetings, the contention that you see online, it can be exaggerated. I even talked to Ray Jackson, more than you would think, mostly about clothes, but still. I think that if I'm lucky enough to be on the city council, I will focus on getting the local coastal program from the Plan Hermosa, 2017 Plan Hermosa enacted that will alleviate some of our challenges building near the coastline, and I would focus on getting more accomplished with less money. I thank you very much for your time. Please visit bryansheil.com, that's S-H-E-I-L, and please consider me for Hermosa Beach City Council. Thank you.
Elka?
Okay, last but not least, all right, we need real change in Hermosa, and we need to start getting projects done. We need to start looking at our budget to see where we can save money. We need to make sure our streets are safe for our families, and we need to help out our businesses. I am an independent thinker who will look at these issues and look at all sides of these issues to present you with the information you need to make decisions that affect your lives. I want you to come and be engaged and give input, because that is what makes our community strong. I will listen to you and work hard for you. I love Hermosa, I grew up here, I'll probably die here, and I am asking for your vote, and just know that I will give this job 110%. Thank you. Thank you, Paul, and thank you, leadership, for doing this.
Thank you, but thank you all. Including tonight's Leadership Hermosa Forum, we'd like to thank the city and all the people behind the scenes who have arranged this room and this venue for us and the videography as well. So let's give a round of applause to the city people behind the scenes. Let's also thank the candidates. It takes a lot to campaign in Hermosa to become city council and to put your views out there, to express your leadership and really want to do this job. So thank you all for your efforts here tonight. I also wanted to raise that we initially had wanted to also have the Treasures candidates in this forum as well. Unfortunately, we couldn't get both Treasures here at the same time. We do have Dave Peterson in the room, so if anyone wants to reach out to him afterwards and talk to him, you certainly can. Karen Nowicki is also available online, you can reach out to her as well. So in, thank you very much for coming, and I'm sure the council, the candidates will be available if you want to talk to them afterwards as well, or Dave. Thank you.
Thank you.